I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectment meeting of December 20th at 6:00 PM. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all rise. Where's the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Okay. So, we are starting tonight with a public hearing. And it's on the proposed repeal of the Fair Rent Commission ordinance. And this was something that the Personnel Subcommittee, Sean, Eric and I moved forward with recommending that we get away with it because we thought that it was, you know, so historical, there was no need for it. But we, you know, we had to schedule a public hearing because it's in the charter. And we did hear from constituents about, you know, worried about the concern. So, we are going to listen to public audience here. I don't see any. And then, we can talk about, well, and we'll have Maria actually fill us in on some of the details before public hearing.
Sounds great.
Maria.
Great. Thank you, Wendy. So, as you may recall, at your November meeting where we scheduled the public hearing, staff didn't initially have a lot of success in trying to find some historical information on this commission. This particular commission had not met since 1990, so it had been over 30 years since it had last met. Our town clerk did a little bit more digging in the vault and did turn up some minutes for us. And it was originally, they began meeting in 1983. And then, it was officially created by a special town meeting in 1986. And then, again, as I mentioned, they met until November of 1990. Our town attorney also did a bit of legal research for us. And he did say that under Connecticut statute, we are not required to have a fair rent commission because we have less than 5,000 rental units here in town. Based on our most recent census information, we have just over 2,000 rental units here in town. So, it is optional for us. If it's something we would like to keep on the books, we certainly could. But there is not a requirement for us to have a commission.
Okay.
It's my seat now?
So...
It's you, Chris.
Yeah. Hi, Chris. So, do we have, we don't have anyone here. We don't have any...
We didn't receive any written comments.
We didn't receive any things. So, does anybody want to talk about this at all? Or do we want to just close the public hearing and make a motion to close it?
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Amber, Eric made the motion. Amber seconded it. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing has been closed. So, now, we move to the public audience portion. And we have one person here for public audience, and that is, I'll let you say your name, and welcome to the podium.
There's a green thing that goes on and it's on.
You know, I think the owl should be able to take it out from that distance.
I'll speak louder.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. At the Board of Selectment meeting, Joan Koch, excuse me, at Joan Koch 26 Woodcomb Drive, at the December 6, 2021 Board of Selectment meeting, Town Manager Maria Capiola responded to my comments about the veracity of Chief Boulter. We need a technician.
Mark Orinstein with a touch.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, I'll call again. Sorry about that. At the December 6, 2021 Board of Selectment meeting, Town Manager Maria Capiola responded to my comments about the veracity of Chief Boulter, using the comments of the state's attorney, that they did not find Chief Boulter lying, and lying is not a criminal offense, not under their jurisdiction. If it is not under their jurisdiction, why did they comment at all? I would give more weight to the police union representative than I would the state's attorney's office, that is, a political organization with prosecutorial discretion that goes unchallenged. Town Manager Maria Capiola did not challenge my comments that documents were altered under the management of Chief Boulter changing sex offense to assist citizen in the public police case incident report and changing it again for internal files. The address of the incident was 55 Dawson Crossing. Was anyone charged for the offense? Are there other incidents that are changed for public consumption? Before Town Manager Maria Capiola defends her position for terminating an assistant town planner, she should share a letter from the employee to Eric Holmes, Human Resources, that states, and I quote, "Mrs. Capiola has multiple times since the complaint has attempted to have my supervisor provide me with a poor performance review. Mrs. Capiola's behavior and yours, Eric Holmes, have created a hostile work environment," end quote. Her supervisor, Town Planner Mike Liddon, had given her an excellent performance review. Was this retaliation for filing a complaint against another employee? Has anyone questioned why Town Manager Capiola tried to coerce her supervisor into lying? Is lying condone behavior? Mike Liddon, Town Planner, has accepted a job in Chester as Town Planner. Mike Liddon's performance as a Town Planner was extremely professional and was highly respected by the Simsbury community. Shawn Kimball, Chester's Town Manager, hired Mike Liddon when he was intern Town Manager in Simsbury and was aware of Mike Liddon's professional qualities. This is another loss of highly professional staff under the management of Town Manager Maria Capiola. Recently, there was a renovation of an area in the Police Department Records Room into an office for a lieutenant. Ray Harris, project administrator in the Public Works Department, did not open a building permit with the Building Department. Work was started without permits and unlicensed tradesmen before the building inspector was alerted to the renovation. There was a cease and desist order to stop work, leaving some of the renovation completed without any inspections. It is alleged that this is not the first time Ray Harris failed in his administration of projects under his direction. This could be a public safety issue. On December 12, 2021, the Police Department received a call from a neighbor on Woodley Place that the resident of 6 Woodley Place heard a loud noise and ran to his home, his house. Many residents with Ring cameras in the area were alerted to active police presence in the neighborhood. The police activity on the scanner stated there was a dangerous person in a BMW car with a gun. The neighbors were alerted to stay indoors. After patrol officers went to the house, in great danger to themselves, found a lady with a single bullet hole to the head and immediately went into action. First aid was administered while waiting for the ambulance to arrive to provide life-saving treatment to the victim. The person was transported to a hospital while other officers remained at the scene. Chief Boulter was monitoring the incident as he was coming to the scene. Later, the SWAT team arrived from various towns to secure the perimeter while others were looking for a BMW. It appears that none of the officers were given direction. Once the victim was transported to investigate the house slowly and methodically and the adjoining garage where the BMWs were parked. If this were done immediately, they would have found the husband with a self-inflicted bullet hole to the head in the garage, and the family would have been contacted. A previous call to the Police Department for a well-being check on a family member that was distraught and depressed resulted in a six-hour delay before the police officer found the body of the resident when she was in an adjoining bathroom in the master bedroom. The police officer was less than three feet away from the bathroom, where music was playing, never opened the bathroom door and left the scene. When police from the next shift found the body, they reported that the master bedroom lights were on and music was playing from a plugged-in phone. Both noticed, noticeable from the backyard because the master bedroom window was open. Officer Ray left the scene and was given counseling missed during served by Chief Boulter.
Joan, I think you've...
If one would think that this incident, they would be training on how to thoroughly secure and investigate a house for the call to action needed. All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Koch, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're gonna move on tonight with a presentation, the Town of Simsbury Dam Safety and Improvement Program. And I believe Jeff Shea's here. And I do want to say, Jeff, you're gonna be our first presentation that we're gonna try to keep to 10 minutes with five minutes of questions. So, let's see if you guys can do that.
I think I can do that, but it's a lot of pressure, though. A lot of pressure.
For the new board members, my name is Jeff Shea. I'm the town engineer. And with me is Danny Gannon. He's our project engineer here in the engineering department. Tonight, we're just gonna bring you up to speed on our dam safety and improvement program that we've been working on for the last seven or eight years. Dams, as you know, are kind of a, not a real exciting piece of infrastructure and mostly out of sight, out of mind. But they obviously can provide some dangerous conditions if they're not properly maintained over time. So, back in 2013, we found that the state had modified their dam safety regulations to really require more frequent inspections and, you know, a little closer look at that infrastructure. Their staff was actually down for many years, and they finally built it up to a point where they could actually administer such a program. So, we actually, at that time, you know, took a look at our dams. And we're responsible for several dams. And next slide, please. Danny, are you sharing your screen?
I have not shared it yet.
Sorry about that.
Can you guys see that there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, maybe go, yeah, go to the next slide, Dan. So...
This one here?
No, the one prior to. Thank you. So, in 2014, town staff proactively completed inspections on all the dams that we own. These reports were submitted to DEP well in advance of the requirement under the new state statute. The inspections did reveal some maintenance and improvements that were required to the dams to ensure their safety and to bring them up to current standards. Based on those inspections, DEP issued requests for engineering and maintenance improvements, which essentially are, you know, strong recommendations to make some improvements to those facilities. Next slide. So, this is a list of the dams that the Town of Simsbury is responsible for. As you can see, they have various hazard classes with BB being the most hazardous that we actually own and maintain. These are considered moderately hazardous as opposed to high-hazard dams. And some of our dams are of the A classification, which is a low hazard dam, both Town Forest and Oracle, which is at the golf course at Simsbury Farms. Next slide. So, again, these are the hazardous classifications. As you can see, the C classification are the higher hazard dams, such as the Tuller Farms or the Tuller Dam owned by the Aquarian Water Company in the western part of town. Most of our dams are the BB variety, moderate hazard. And that classification defines those dams as dams, if they failed, that would have damage to unoccupied structures, to low-volume roads, and have moderate economic loss for the community. Next slide. So, these are just some photographs of the dams that we own, just to give you some sense of those facilities. Lake Basile Dam up there, the Granby Line, is an impoundment for Lake Basile itself. The property is owned by the Town of Simsbury. Some beneficial use is provided for the Town of Granby, who has some properties, residential properties that actually abut this facility. So, in the upper left, you can see the dam looking west with the lake being on the right side. The one down on the lower left shows the spillway area looking upstream. And there's actually a footbridge over that, that spillway. Upper right is the actual pedestrian or footbridge across the spillway, which isn't in great condition, as you can see. And below, another picture of the footbridge showing a center post that is actually located right in the center of the spillway, which isn't a great design. Next slide. Stoddard Reservoir Dam is again Class BB dam off West Mountain Road. This is one of the few dams that's actually visible from the road. In the upper left, you can see the reservoir on the left and the upper part of the dam to the right of that picture, in that picture. Lower left shows the low-level outlet control structure out in the middle of the impoundment or the reservoir and the spillway area with their fence at the top of the spillway. Upper right shows the spillway from the down, the down slope area. You can see the spillway area is spilling right now. And the dam is an earthen dam with some masonry center sections where the spillway actually exists. In the lower section, just shows some of that masonry area that is in fair condition. There's some repointing that would be beneficial. But let's move on to the next slide. House Rest Pond Dam is also a Class BB hazard. This is located behind the public library down the embankment. It's kind of a neat little area, kind of a park area, but underappreciated. Upper left, you can see the actual impoundment that is not on Town of Simsbury property. It's actually part of the condominium association up near Library Lane. And the dam is actually owned by the Town of Simsbury, another earthen dam. Lower left shows the spillway area. And this is actually prior to a repair that we did here back in 2013. Shows the footbridge across the spillway and the dam area. Upper left shows, it's a good shot of the dam itself, again, earthen dam, lake or impoundment on the right and the spillway going towards the left. And on the bottom, again, just shows some of the condition of the training walls downstream of the spillway that were addressed back in 2013 under an emergency repair. Next slide. Town Forest Dam is in Town Forest Park that is off of Town Forest Road. Again, another footbridge across the spillway in the upper left, downstream, looking upstream on the lower left. Upper right shows the impoundment that's been used for recreation and fishing for many years. And lower right shows some of the training walls downstream of the footbridge across the top of the spillway, also masonry construction. Next slide. And Oracle Dam, which is again part of the Simsbury Farm complex, it's off Hopbrook Road towards the backside of where the maintenance area is. Along the, there's a trail that runs along this top of the dam. The upper left shows the earthen dam looking south, I believe, yeah, with the, the impoundment to the, to the right. This impoundment is used for water quality storage for the irrigation system that feeds the entire golf course. So, it's a pretty important facility. Lower left, the picture shows the pump house in the background, the impoundment on the right and the lake or the water storage area on the left. Upper right, the picture shows the outlet structure that actually controls the elevation of the dam with a control gate just beyond it. You can see the stem above the water line. And the lower right is the actual outfall pipe from the dam. Next slide. So, back in other previous fiscal years, we did request funding, and we were fortunate to get it to fund some of the activities that we felt were required to bring the dams up to current standards. Back in 16, we received $30,000 under the CIP program, sort of some seed money. And in 17, we received 145,000. So, that was our budget that we had been working off of off of the last, for the last seven or eight years. Next slide. Now, I'm gonna turn this over to Dan Gannon. He's gonna talk a little bit about some of the projects we completed with that funding to date. Dan?
Thank you. So, with the funding that we've done so far, we've done periodic inspections of the town-owned dams in 2014 and 2019, most recently. Although they are required every seven to 10 years, we're trying to inspect them a little more frequently due to the condition of the dams. We've also completed emergency repairs to House Rest Pond Dam in 2017. We installed a few Gabion wing walls because the wing walls aren't in great condition. We've started Phase 2 dam investigation for Stoddard Reservoir Dam. We've completed bridge-type study for Lake Basile Dam. And last year, we did some clearing of trees and shrubbery along the top of and slopes of most of the dams. And then, we've also done H&amp;H study, design and permitting for the Simsbury Farms, Oracle Farms Dam. So, for, one of the near-term dam improvements we're looking at is Oracle Farms Dam. This is the one at Simsbury Farms Golf Course, as Jeff previously mentioned. So, you can see on the left is the existing earthen embankment of the dam. And then, on the right is the control structure. You can see specifically with this control structure, there's a few holes sort of poking in it with some water leaking through the pipe due to corrosion over the years. Metal pipes don't have a great lifespan. So, again, as Jeff mentioned, the dam provides an impoundment for the golf course irrigation water storage. And the existing outlet capacity, freeboard and emergency spillway are insufficient under current design standards. So, we're looking to replace that outlet structure, raise and level off the top of the earthen embankment. And again, as aforementioned, the existing outlet control structure has beyond its useful life. It's sort of, we're taking it year by year now, seeing how it holds up. And then, the project costs included are in the six-year outlook plan for, included within the golf course irrigation project. Total cost being approximately $300,000. Another near-term dam project we're looking at is Lake Basile. This was the one up on the Town of Granby border. You can see the pedestrian footbridge isn't in the best of shape. There's a few pieces of wood hanging off. This, as Jeff mentioned, this middle support of the, of the bridge is right in the middle of the spillway. So, during a big flood, water levels rise, trees and branches can come down and get caught on that and ultimately take out that support. So, that's something that we're looking to get rid of. And this, this bridge provides access so to the west, which is often this direction. In the top-left picture are some neighborhoods in Simsbury, Tuller Circle, Rebecca Lane, that sort of area. And that connects them down to the east, which is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. So, this is a pretty, pretty critical connection for those, those folks that use that. So, here are two of the alternatives that we looked at for this, for this bridge replacement is a weathering steel bridge with a wood deck on the top picture and a fiberglass truss bridge in the bottom picture. Both of them have the same, the same sort of decking. Both of them meet International Building Code and other appropriate codes that would be used for this. And they're both approximately $126,000. And then, for some of the longer-term dam improvements, one of them is Stoddard Dam. You can see in the pictures here, this is a picture from standing on top of the dam looking where the water overflows approximately here. And then, the picture on the right we took in August of this year during one of those crazy storm events, you can see how much water's overflowing the dam. This is typically the spillway, the smaller section here, but the water is flowing over the top of the, pretty much the entire length of the dam. So, this pond's used mostly for recreational purposes and flood control. Simsbury Fish and Game Club are the ones that stock this reservoir with fish that they fish in on a yearly basis. And so, in terms of the dam capacity, the spillway doesn't have the capacity to prevent overtopping even during low-frequency flooding events. As you saw in that picture previously, it's a larger event, but it really does overtop pretty much the entire length of the dam. And there's insufficient freeboard, so the dam would need to get raised several feet based on some analyses that we've gone through. So, we've come up with three alternatives. So, the first one would be increasing the height of the dam and having an approximately 50-foot-long spillway. So, for reference, this here, the smaller section is approximately 10 feet wide. So, it would be maybe the, the length of that, more or less. And that would be $3.3 million based on a 2024 construction date. Alternative two would be a complete reconstruction of the dam with having the spillway increased to 100 feet long. So, it'd be even twice the length of the first one, and that's $3.1 million. And then, the third, third alternative, which is much different, is to remove the dam altogether and pretty much have a stream channel from the farthest upstream point of the, the impoundment all the way down to where the pictures were taken from. So, it would just be a straight river through with no pond, and that would be 1.1 million. And this cost does not include the potential cost of contaminated soil testing and removal because we don't know what sort of work was done in this area prior to the pond creation. And then, the last long-term project that we're looking at is the House Rest Pond Dam, the one behind the library. As mentioned before, the, the wing walls were previously reconstructed with these Gabion wing walls, which you could see here. This picture was taken after the construction, so it looks in good condition. But it, it's pretty old, and these are only temporary measures to hold the, to, to support the dam. So, we're looking for a full replacement of the wing walls, the outlet structure and the, the bridge over top. And that's approximately $100,000. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions here? Thank you. I, I feel it's harder to stop somebody than it sounds, so.
I think Sean has a question.
I do. So, specifically on the Stoddard Dam, is there an option four of do nothing? To me, if, if option three is to breach it, is option four to let it breach naturally over time? I guess, help me understand the difference between those two, Jeff and Dan.
Yeah, Sean, you know, right now, I think DEP's taking the soft, soft approach with, you know, asking us or recommending that we do certain improvements. At some point, they may issue an order that tells us to do something. And I don't really know what that timeline would be. I don't think you could naturally have it breached naturally. It would probably, if it was gonna fail, it would fail catastrophically. So, I think you just gotta kind of balance the risk, you know, with the reward, so to speak. So, what, what potential impacts might, may there be downstream? How long can you hold it together in the condition it's in? One of the problems is, again, as we all know, the storms are getting more intense. And the, you know, the design criteria has gotten larger in terms of what you need to design for. So, these things are, you know, 100-year-old structures that we're, you know, we're trying to keep up with the, the climate change. I know that's a dirty word, but that's, I think, what we're talking about here.
No, no doubt, Jeff. I appreciate that. Remind me what's downstream, Mr. Stoddard?
So, we have a couple of roads, John Peel and Dan, what's the other one? Is it...
Yeah, that was down in the Tooten Hills area.
Tooten Hills, thank you.
Yep.
And downstream of that, it's fairly wide open and, you know, kind of runs down along the Public Works yard, the stream. So, you know, there's probably some risk, but not large risk to, you know, very few properties if it fails. But, you know, I just don't know, you know? That's just some, some unknown that we don't know about. On the larger dams like the Tuller Farm Stand, they actually have to do studies of what would happen if the dam failed. This dam does not require that because of its hazardous class. But that's something that, you know, we could explore further.
I guess, I mean, your point is, is, and again, I did somewhat on the answer, obviously a runway and houses is the potential for damage and loss of life if it does catastrophically fail. So, the, the answer to my question is really... So the, the answer to my question is really letting it just sit there isn't really an option. We have to do something over, over the period of time here. It's just a matter of when, right?
I think that's right.
This is not in any current CIP, like it wasn't in the, or not out in the two to six years. It wasn't there.
Initially, when you prepared the baseline needs, this was included in terms of, you know, everything that was out there in the plan, our baseline needs, this was included. But as we said.
Your outlook, it was removed only because at this point in time, we, we don't really have a definitive, we, we must do this by, you know, such and such a date, but that date will come at some point in the future. And particularly Stoddard, just because of the cost of all the various options, I definitely just wanted to sort of, you know, kind of put this back on your radar, let you know the work that engineering has been doing to keep up with the inspections. But this is all sort of long-term work that we will have to tackle at some point. And in the event that we did have some unexpected, you know, sort of emergency failure of any of these dams, again, just wanted you to be aware of what, what's on the horizon.
Other question, yeah, can, well, just the idea, throw it out there. Considering the, the very successful conservation program that, that, what's what I'll call conservation program that operates out of that, uses that facility, is there a way that we could somehow work that into some granting or some funding from either the DEP or the state or the federal government to continue to support the programming for youth that goes on out there?
Chris, in terms of federal and state funding for dams, there's so many.
Dams that are in such bad condition, that are owned by the state and private entities, that there's practically no money for these types of projects at the state or federal level. At the federal level, you compete against much, much larger dam projects. And it, it's, it's almost, there's almost no money available or not on the horizon.
Certainly, you know, we're, we're dealing with what we're, you know, by and large, industry, we're dealing with a legacy that of dam, you know, dam maintenance or creation for a purpose that no longer exists in the 21st or 22nd century, by and large, across the entire dam, damming.
Watch your language.
Catalog of the country, right? So now we have to keep up with that, you know, for example, in Toller, absolutely, as soon as it exists. So, but even, but just because.
This has.
The conservation.
A different, a different way to twist going after some of that money versus just, we need help repairing one of our dams. That's all. I'm just asking you go to.
You know, what, what do you think might be challenging from sort of a recreational perspective is oftentimes grant funding is available for us to acquire land to conserve it, but not then sort of the, the maintenance or the upkeep. So maybe you have things, you know, such as what helped us with kind of what like the Federal Highlands Conservation Dollars or the, the Open Space and Watershed Grant we received from the state, those unfortunately typically are for acquisition as opposed to maintenance. But something we could, you know, we could look around and.
It's an idea.
Yeah.
I was just gonna, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask, could this potentially be an infrastructure project that would qualify under the ARPA grant?
You know, again, I, I don't think with our current limitations under the guidance, we would be able to do that. You know, again, if we had some revenue loss and, and had more flexibility and use of some of those dollars, this might have been a good candidate perhaps to do a capital project that way. But, you know, when we get the permanent guidance that comes out in January, if something looks different, then, you know, perhaps this could be an infrastructure project.
Well, even to add on to that, the infrastructure, the big infrastructure, the, after ARPA, we don't even know what we're going to get with that too. So that maybe, I think that's what you're talking about.
I have a question. With looking at the cost differentials of the options, what would be an advantage of option alternative one or two? You know, when you look at the difference in cost between alternative three and what looking at either one of them, you know, are the, the costs going forward? So you go with option three, what sort of inspections and things are we looking at versus two? So kind of what kind of costs come after the project?
Well, with some, I mean, Heather, we.
Again, I don't even know, Jeff, but if we rebuilt, if we did one and two, so give us your projection, what board, what, what decade is the board sitting on that is considering the replacement of, of that option one or two dam? Is that the 2054, the, the 2100? Who is it, you think?
You know, I don't know, you know, other towns have struggled with this. I know Glastonbury breached one of their dams within the last few years. And we, you know, honestly, we, we did escalate these costs from some 2020 estimates, so they're a little higher than the numbers we have, but realistically, it's going to go up. But to, to answer Heather's question, the maintenance issue would be on the 100-foot dam, you have more concrete to maintain versus earthen dam on alternate one, but we were just trying to look at different options to see what that cost might be. Also, the permits might drive us to one or the other based on modifications to downstream flows that, you know, the, the deep might be concerned about how that might affect other properties. So until we get into it a little deeper, we wouldn't know what the best option is.
I guess what I'm saying is that we can spend.
2100 boards spend 12 million to replace the 3 million we spend right now.
I guess under alternative three, there is no dam anymore, right?
That's my point. We spent 1.6 to never have to replace a dam again. That's one way to look at this because we talk about declining revenues and things that we wouldn't have competing money for in the future.
That was my question, why are they even on there?
I, I assume the downside of option three is they would lose the fishing pond.
Correct, no.
Well, but Jeff also said though, that it's not just necessarily 1.1, right, Jeff? And that we might have to remediate. Deep's not just going to let us walk in and blow the dam up tomorrow and, you know, not, not do an assessment downstream. So that cost is likely going to escalate, right?
Now, that, that program, I would have, you guys should check, I mean, if you don't, guys, you've not familiar with that program that, that operates out of there for, for, what it does for kids, it's pretty amazing. And it's an amazing group of individuals who, so that's, that's what tugs at my heart is the consideration of what to do. But do we think about an alternative, do we work with and look for an alternative spot for them also? Then that's something we can think about as well. I have no idea what that is.
I have just a small question. The 300,000 for the one at the farms, the irrigation, is that rolled into the, the already 3.2 or 2.2 for the irrigation?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it is.
It's in there. Yeah, okay. And then the only other thing that I noticed is the, the, the bridge at Lake Basile, Basile? It looks like kind of somebody could get hurt there. I don't know if that's a safety risk. You know, that just makes it more important because like if you look at that missing log, there's somebody could just, so.
For folks who were on our bike ride.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, it was pretty.
Did you take us there strategically?
We did not. That was actually a coincidence, but a great coincidence.
That wasn't pretty.
I have a question on that one as well. So you listed two options, but they both are coming in at the same cost. Does one have a longer lifespan?
Yeah, there's actually less maintenance on the fiberglass truss bridge because there's no corrosion to be concerned about.
I think it, it, there's a little bit of a premium on that bridge. It's not, not a lot, it's less than $10,000. But it's a new technology, so you know what I mean, over long term? We don't necessarily know how it's going to perform. Fiberglass can't crack, you know, the bridge, the weathering steel is a proven design that's used many, many places. So those are the differences. But the weathering steel also does protect itself from corrosion, so there'd be less, less maintenance than a normal steel structure with that, with that finish.
Thank you, Jeff and Dan.
All right.
That was.
Thanks for the interest.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Someone was going to say it. Okay. So I'm going to do the first selectman's report. Yay, okay. So we're a little punchy because it's our last meeting of the year. I just wanted to say that we thought we were getting back on track and back to normal with COVID, but it appears that we are getting reeled back in right now. And I just wanted to say, to make sure you do what it takes to enjoy your family time over the holidays and to really thank and appreciate everybody that's vaccinated and gotten boosters and sticking with the program. I also want to take the liberty to speak for the whole board here and express our condolences to the family and friends of those that were impacted by the event of last Sunday night. You know, it saddened all of us and it really exemplifies how we stand together as a community. So just, and respected the privacy of the people that were impacted. Our new Board of Selectmen spent Saturday 12/11 in a very thoughtful goal setting session. There was lots of spirited, passionate and honest dialogue between all board members. And it's evident that we are all here to do what we think is best for our community and that no one on this board is shy. I was just going to say that stood out. So I just want to look back a little at 2021 very quickly. It's very hard to remember what we did in 2021 because it was really not a good year for most of us, I think. But we all took precautions and the town really did the best they could to keep everyone safe from COVID. We committed funding for the Latimer Lane Project. We purchased Meadowwood and the community played a large role in that. We dedicated the Flower Bridge. We had 10,000 people come to our town to see Darius Rucker. And we had a, we had a municipal election that went pretty well, pretty smoothly. Looking ahead to 2022, we as a board are going to have some really tough budget decisions, so you guys are going to have to stick with us. We have American Rescue Plan funds that we're working on figuring out what to do with. We have zoning items coming around pot legalization and ADUs. And we also have to finish and start implementing our goals and also just keep working on ways to keep everyone safe and healthy. So on that note, I just want to wish everybody who celebrates a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all. And that's my report. Turn that over to Maria for the Town Manager's Report.
Great, thank you, Wendy. Good evening, everyone. So first, an update on the pandemic. Many of you, I'm sure, saw that we have reached red alert status under the DPH Municipal Alert System. We are currently at 39.7 cases per 100,000 people and our positivity rate was 7.1%. These are some of the highest case rates and positivity rates we've seen during the entirety of the pandemic. The Health District is experiencing that throughout all 10 of their towns at the moment. Trends that they're seeing in terms of what is contributing to the spread is lack of mask wearing amongst, amongst both vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals in public places and social gatherings, and folks who are dismissing symptoms. COVID, but for individuals who think perhaps it might just be a cold. So they're not seeking testing and, and continuing to go about their daily routines. What the Health District is seeing is that there are 40 confirmed cases as of their, their most recent email to us of the Omicron variant here in Connecticut. They said that it is possible that within about a month, that could become the dominant form of the variant here in Connecticut. They're also, you know, seeing a significant increase in hospitalization statewide. A statistic I think is very important to share is that 75% of those hospitalized are people who are not fully vaccinated. So they are strongly encouraging folks to please, to go out and get vaccinated and to seek your boosters. We are making progress in our new age group of children ages five to 11 who are now eligible for vaccination. Over half of our children here in our community in that age group have now received at least their first dose. So those who are becoming fully vaccinated continues to steadily increase as well. So some good news to report there. And for Board of Selectmen business, as Wendy mentioned, I think we had a very productive, positive goal setting session on December 11th. We do, I need an additional session in January to continue that work. I know some of you have had a moment to complete the dual poll with your availability. So if you haven't yet done so and, and could do that in the coming week or so, that'd be terrific and we'll lock down that, that second date to continue your work. Just a few items for department news and notes. I'm pleased to announce the promotion of Ethan Deeds in our Parks Division to our Facility Maintenance Technician position. You may recall, this was the new position added to Parks during the budget process. Ethan has been with us since 2006. He's most recently served as a Parks Maintainer too, and he takes the lead in caring for Memorial Park. So all of the fields and the park, he just does an incredible job there, very technically skilled. I'm really excited about the passion and enthusiasm he has for the Parks Infrastructure Investments that you all have authorized and the work order system and just really helping to see those projects through. There's just, again, so much energy he has and excitement around, around that work. So congratulations to Ethan. He'll be starting in that new role just after the holidays. And I know the board is aware, but I just want to take a moment to publicly thank and acknowledge our Director of Planning, Mike Liddit, who will unfortunately be leaving us at the end of this month. He's been with us since November of 2013. He initially started out as our Code Enforcement Officer in the Planning Department and then was promoted to Assistant Town Planner and ultimately to Planning Director in 2018. I'm definitely going to miss having Mike on staff. I really appreciate the good working relationships he's had with our business community. He's always had a very customer service oriented approach to, to helping our residents. And I really also appreciate that he works to find creative solutions to difficult problems. And I think as, you know, public administrators, we always hope to leave the community we're serving in a little bit of a better place than we, than we found it. And I think all of the contributions that Mike has added to our community, we can definitely say that Mike has definitely made this a better place for all of us. So again, just really want to publicly thank and acknowledge Mike for all of his good work and certainly wish him well in, in his next endeavor. And then lastly, from Social Services, this is a really fun one. Through our Youth Services Bureau Grant, we were able to purchase holiday family fun take home kits. So those are free to any member of our community. All you have to do is reach out to Social Services at 658-3283 or stop by, you know, Memorial Hall during normal business hours and we're happy to get that gingerbread crafting activity to you.
Nice. And thanks, Maria. You're welcome. Okay, so let's move on to, ooh, we're not moving on to Selectmen Action, we're moving on to the Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. Does anybody have any? Eric?
I do. Starting with the Board of Ed. At their last meeting, they gave an update on the Latimer Project and it was really the first, you know, public look at what the designs are looking like. And it's really interesting if anyone's interested in seeing it, but I'll just highlight a couple of things. They are creating sort of a separate gym and cafeteria space that'll still be connected to the school, but it'll have its own entrance and it'll really be walled off so that if there are events there at night, they don't have to open up the entire building. Another neat thing is they're making the roof solar ready. The project is not going to include solar panels because I hadn't been, you know, part of the conversation that was budgeted. But if down the road, hopefully soon, there were an opportunity to install solar panels up there, they'd essentially just need to be plugged in. It would be ready to go, which is great. And the Clean Energy Task Force, which I'm also liaison to, is really engaged with Tecton in this work. And my hope is that they'll be, they'll be at the table for future building projects earlier in the process so that, that these kinds of things can be considered. The only other update I have, the school shared enrollment projections, between now and 2023, there are some projections that there could be as many as 500 more kids in the schools. They think that might be on the aggressive side, but apparently a lot of people in Simsbury were having babies in 2018. I don't know what was going on then, but five years later, they're going to be starting kindergarten. So the next school that's likely going to be discussed for significant renovations would be Squadron Line. That's my update.
Um, Scott, I'm just going to call you Scott. Sean?
Just a quick one from Public Safety. Thank you. I think everybody on this board attended the recent Public Safety Meeting. I appreciate obviously everybody's interest there. I won't drain the slide on that one, but there will be, I think, a special meeting that we're working right to schedule before a January meeting of our Board of Selectmen to discuss in specific fashion, the ambulance responses, service overall, the, the staffing of the second ambulance. And I think a much more robust update for, for you all here. So we're working to get that scheduled and I appreciate Maria and Town Staff for helping us get that done. And obviously for Karen and Simsbury Ambulance for partnering with us to make sure that we're getting the information out there for this, you know, really important service that, you know, that people rely on daily. And again, Wendy, you know, you said it and, and I agree. Thank you, in particular to the Simsbury Police Department for your professionalism and, and response to a very tragic event, you know, a week ago, Sunday. Again, very proud of our officers despite the very sad outcome. You know, never wish for anybody to have to, to respond to that type of scene. And I did talk to the chief, obviously support is being provided for those that need it and the police department, you know, because those folks go home to their families just like we do. But once again. But, uh, once again, uh, I thought, uh, I, I listened to the event as, as Joan mentioned as well over the Skinner and others did and, and again, um, always marvel at the professionalism and the calm that, that our, uh, first responders handle these types of tragic situations with, so. So that's my update.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, I like that portion of the, the meeting. So we're going to move on to selectmen action and the first item up is the tax refund requests. So if the board supports approving the tax refunds, the following motion is in order, move effective December 20th, 2021 to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $3,452.96 to authorize Town Manager Maria E. Capriola to execute the tax refunds. So do I have a motion for that?
I'll move. I'll second it.
Okay, um, that was Heather and, um, Sean, I mean, the motion, Sean seconded it. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? So that motion carries. The next item up is the donation from Trinity Episcopal Church. Um, does, Maria, did you want to say anything about that or you want me to just read it?
Sure, just quickly, that, um, we're really grateful to Trinity Episcopal Church. They donated, um, $3,000 to us to support the holiday program, um, the Social Services puts on for our residents in need. So many thanks to them for that.
That's great. Um, okay, so I'm going to move effective December 20th, 2021 to accept a donation from Trinity Episcopal Church in the amount of $3,000 for the purpose of supporting Simsbury Community and Social Services Department's holiday program, which assists residents in need. Do we have a motion? Amber, is there a motion?
And I'll second that with our thanks.
Okay, so that was Amber and Eric. Um, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? So that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, Healthy Living Collective Grant. Any feedback you'd like to provide, Maria?
Sure. So this is a neat opportunity that came across the desk of our Senior Center Coordinator, Kathy Marshall. Um, it's an opportunity for us to train, um, an instructor in a particular form of Tai Chi, um, as well as to then be able to offer that program. So that's something that we're hoping, uh, you would support us in submitting that for application.
And that's just like, uh, we could just ask, is this a specific grant for this? We just apply for this, we get it, doesn't take away from anything else, right? Just the work to do the grant.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to read both together. Um, so we're going to move effective December 20th to submit the Healthy Living Collective Grant Tai Chi Kuan Moving for Better Balance Program and Instructor Training Grant Application and to authorize Maria E. Capriola, Town Manager, to execute the grant application and in the event the grant is awarded, um, to make the following motion, move to accept the Healthy Collective Grant Program and Instructor Train, to authorize Maria to execute application and to authorize Maria to execute all documents related to the grant award. So I could have a motion for that.
Move that.
Sean moved it.
I'll second.
Eric seconded it. Um, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for taking the time to do that. And we have the Emergency Management Performance Grant Application, which I think is an annual grant. Um, I think I'm just going to go ahead and read it, go with it. Um, the Board of Selectmen supports applying for this emergency performance grant, which we have to do every year. We move effective December 20th, 2021 to apply for the 2122 Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented and in the event the grant is awarded, we move to accept the 202122 Emergency Management Performance Grant and to authorize Maria E. Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all documents related to the grant's award. Do I?
So I
So, um, Heather and Sean, um, all those in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye. And, and the opposed? So that motion carries. And, ooh, that's it. So now we get to the appointments and resignations portion of the meeting. And we're, let's see, we're going to move to accept the resignation of Community for Care members Hannah Reynolds, retroactive to January 2nd, 2021, Karen Gallagher, retroactive to December 10th, 2021, and Mark Lehman, retroactive to December 10th, 2021.
So move.
Okay, Eric made the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Amber, um, seconded that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion, that moves forward. Okay, so then we have the resignations from, thus, an appointment to the Spirit Council. So we have, um, move to accept the resignation of Annalise Fabus Barlow and Chris Kelly as regular members of the Spirit Council, retroactive to December 6th, 2021, and move effective December 20th, 2021 to appoint Salvador Sanchez as a regular member of the Spirit Council with a term expiring December 4th, 2023.
Move that.
Um, Sean moved that?
I'll second.
Amber seconded. Any discussion on that?
Just that I'm very sorry to see Annalise and Chris go. Thanks for their service.
Okay. Thank you. And welcome to, um,
To Sal Sanchez?